...meeting of financing claims on August the 11th, 2015. So Jim, we want to take a look at some of the where we're at as far as some of the funds we have talked about in the mid-year adjustments to hopefully finish up, you know, get us through the end of the year.
Yeah, Mr. Sankar, we did look at a number of funds, basically making a sample Exhibit A to put in front of you. There's essentially two top sections and then a big middle section. The large middle section is all of the funds where we went through and looked at current appropriations for all of the funds outside of the general fund and then projected, compared their actual revenue compared to their current appropriations and those that had revenues exceeding those appropriations, we increase on this list. There are three in this batch that have longer keys, well, four actually. There's the O2, 08, 52, 7300, and then one from Fund 20 and two from Fund 50, and those actually are addressed on this other sheet. But everything else that's here actually reflects revenues that have come into those We also looked at and adjusted our certificate of estimated resources for each fund and the general fund itself, which does allow us to have a little bit of room to move some money around. And I've made some suggestions on this sheet. Most of these are pretty straightforward and refer back to the list of purchase order requests with insufficient appropriations, which is the double-sided printed eight and a half by 11 page. You've all seen this before. And then there's two other keys on here that are on the sample Exhibit A that are lightly highlighted. Sorry, they're very lightly highlighted. I thought they'd be darker, in that second box down. If we can go over to the purchase order request with insufficient appropriations, there are a couple of letters that went along with this. First of all, to address if you did get a letter from the building commissioner about the core funds, those are included in here. Fund 97 increasing by $6,052.21, and that's actually an increase in its revenue that should be reflected in its appropriations. The other one is a letter from the police chief, from Chief Kramer, talking about the new hires and the expenses for the new hires. There's several expenses on here. There's $4,200, $3,850, $18,796, and $12,000. Those are all reflected in the key where the second line down that says Police Department contractual expenses. If you look on page two of the purchase order request with insufficient appropriations, those are all total on the top of that page. It equals $41,846.44. In that key, there's currently $99.65, and I just rounded that up to $42,000. The breakdown in that is $15,000 for Hamilton County Coroner, third and fourth quarter drug ID. This is where the police officers take the drugs to the coroner and say, yes, that is crack, yes, that is heroin, yes, that is marijuana, so that they can convict people. $18,796.44 is for the police academy training for three new hires, new police on the streets. We've got $3,850, which is psychological exams for seven new hires. They have to pass a psych exam. And the pre-employment physicals for those seven new hires are $4,200. We add that up, that's where you get the $41,846.44, which is why I made that $42,000.
Wasn't there also $12,000 for uniforms on the letter?
Uh, yes, there is. What is not in the letter is the drug ID, so that would have to go up by another $12,000. So $54,000 if that would be your desire. Thank you, Mr. Mumper. We can address the next thing on this page because I do have a note from one of my staff on this. Apparently, there's been requests put in by the clerk of courts for Butler County Sheriff's Office prisoner housing. Another $11,000. They've apparently just been coming to my office asking, why isn't this approved instead of writing a letter to you guys? And I've directed my office to say they need to, because there's still some confusion. And when you look at the language of the note that I have on that discussion is they still think there's a fund, that money coming in from the jail fee goes into a fund and we should be appropriating that money. It's not. It's a key in the general fund. You can't separate that as its own distinct fund because of the restrictions by the state of Ohio. So it has to be mixed in with the general fund. So that money they're collecting for the jail fee just gets mixed in and pays for everything. Pays for our electricity for City Hall, pays for the policemen and the firemen and for the rec center. I mean, it doesn't get segregated in paying just for the jail fees. Apparently, they've deposited about $7,000 this year. They want another $11,000 to be able to lock up more prisoners. I think that this is an important thing to have, but I also think that this is communication that should be happening between the clerk of courts and the finance committee and not somebody in my office and somebody in their office. So I'd like to direct that. I don't know if you want to appropriate some money because it's nice to still be able to lock up prisoners, or if you just want to let this go until the next meeting, which is in, well, like a week or two. But that's something to think about.
There's nothing in there right now, is that right?
There's $1,650 in there right now. They have a couple of open purchase orders. I can tell you the exact amount they've got open here.
A partial on there would be something to at least keep us actively set in.
So is that $11,000 owed, or is that what they used?
They're requesting another $11,000, and it's not the amount that's necessarily owed. There's still this question of a balance that might be owed from a previous year that we had not been billed for, but I've not seen all the documentation on that yet. Apparently, the sheriff's office was slow at billing us for some things. If they're not, we want to pay them for everything they've done, but I want to see all the invoices for it, so.
Does that take us to the end of the year? At $11,000?
I believe that that's...
Or is that something that we owe in the past?
No, this is for this year. This is for this year.
So will it take us to the end of the year?
It's difficult to say how, I was going to look here at exactly how much they've actually spent. We appropriated $23,000, including an open PO from last year, so that's the beginning balance plus an open PO. They've spent $18,620. They've got $4,460 left, plus they can appropriate another $16,500, so they've got about $6,000 available that they can either open a new PO for or on existing POs.
Let's give them $5,000.
Okay. I'm sure that'll get them through the next time you meet. Continuing on the same page, there's a refund for Recreation Commission. That's down in this bottom paragraph where it says Fund 20 Recreation Fund $400 refund. We start the year without money in the refund keys typically, and we have to appropriate those. Similarly, the next section is Water Fund refunds. These are overpayments that are reimbursed usually when people move away. That's $1,173.42. Then there's a section here for materials and supplies, another $7,500 for the water fund, vehicle parts, $4,000, and the quarter bank run and fill sand of $3,500. They've got enough in that fund to carry that amount, so I just put that on the suggested list.
We do need to do some, you know, to cover the vehicle parts and the other.
Yes, there's $7,500. I have it on here for materials and supplies. It's $3,500 for the fill sand and $4,000 for the vehicle parts totaling $7,500.
I got you.
On the other side of the page, at the top, tax refunds. There's an earning tax refund, appropriating the money for that. Another batch that was, actually, when I looked at this, I just did, they've got $33,161. All we have to do is increase that by like $200. We don't need that full amount, so I'll change that. Health Department, Board of Health, third and fourth quarter, Board of Health meetings. You know, the members of the Board of Health are paid, not a large amount, about $480 per quarter for their meetings. There's also some SPCA fees that are in here, and those are all included on the contractual expenses for the Health Department, $1,250. There's also some vehicle parts for them for $500. It says third quarter, but I'm thinking that'll get them through the end of the year. The Health Department cars are very old. I think I have children younger than they are, so it costs money to keep them running. The Building Department issue, there's still POs, even though we have these outstanding $1,000, or $12,300 for third and fourth quarter, they have not fully expended their second quarter yet, so I would just wait until it runs out of money and they issue a new PO. I think they overrequested this year based on previous years. Street Department, where it talks about it being negative, that has to do with a change in the way we had the salt charged. They charged it all to the State Highway Fund and not to the streets, so we needed to split it the way that it's supposed to be split. And in that accounting, it made the street fund go negative just on appropriations, but not on their cash. So we just increased that up to their cash amount, and that leaves enough money to cover all the expenses that are listed here, basically putting another $50,000 in the 7300 key for The only other thing on here to address, there was a request on page two for the Fire Department, Fire Chief IAFC membership dues. That comes out of the 7200 key, and I'm looking at this now, and there's a 2015 miscellaneous building repairs PO for $1,640 that still has $1,412.84. That's just a blanket. I think they should reduce that blanket PO by the amount of this, by the amount of the membership dues to cover it. Just making one blanket to tie up all of your appropriations and then come back and go, well, wait, I don't have enough money to pay for something else. You need to decrease the amount of the blanket first before asking for that to be increased. The other issue that I put on, there's two other things on here. One is the situation with the former Assistant Law Director, current Law Director, and suggesting that the city carry a one year, one month expense of COBRA for health insurance for a family plan. Previously, when people left the city, because we always pay the health insurance one month in advance, employees who left the city would typically be covered until either the end of the month they leave, if they leave in the early part of the month, or if they left on pretty much the first, they would be covered for that whole next month. That was the way it was done for a very long time. When the Assistant Law Director was talking about leaving, there was a gap in his insurance between when his new job would start and this job ended. He had the option of jumping onto his wife's insurance at a significant cost, but we had already paid his health insurance for the month of July, or June. He left May 31st, June 1st. We had already paid May 31st all of June's bill. We informed him that his bill was already paid for his health insurance, so he would be covered for those 30 days, as was the way the city operated for many years. We found out after he took his kid to the emergency department for falling down the stairs and the other kid went to an ENT appointment, that the insurance does not cover till the end of the, until the end of the month anymore, that the treasurer's office, who manages the insurance, started a program last year where if anybody leaves the city and they leave on the 15th, that we request from the insurance company a rebate for those two weeks at the end of the month to come back to us, and the insurance coverage is terminated day one when they leave. The employees didn't know that and weren't notified of that. I was unaware of it at the time. I had told the Assistant Law Director when he left that he would be covered. He is now the current Law Director. I would recommend covering that expense out of the COBRA key, which is on the top here. You can see $1,196. Taking it out of the Law Director payroll key, $1,196 at the bottom because it was charged to that account and then refunded to that account. So it was charged that key and then refunded to that key in a rebate, but like I said, we were unaware of this happening, so. He acted in good faith based on what I told him, which is we cover our people, you know, we've already paid your bill, which we had already paid it. We didn't realize that rebates were coming back. So what I'd suggest is putting in the COBRA healthcare key that amount, taking it from the Law Director key because that's where it would have come from to pay for it anyway, and it's just a wash. I don't know if anybody has any comments or questions on that. The other thing to think about, looking at the projections for this year, we are not going to end in the positive. We've not ended in the positive for the past four years. We are decreasing consistently the amount that we are negative as we move forward, and by the end of 2017, we're going to be positive based on our projections. The reason we wouldn't be by 2016 is we've got that big final bond payout and, you know, there's expenses related to that. I think we're going to be better off next year than we are this year a little bit, and it's just, we're going to be tight as we move forward. When I say we're negative, what I mean is there's things that are owed at the end of the year that are not paid in the year that they are billed. Usually, they're paid in the first month or two with the exception of the C9 Trust, which is an ongoing carryover that my office has been paying roughly $30,000 a month to try to get caught up, but they also generate about $30,000 a month in expenses, so that's going to take a while to dig out of that hole. The other big expense being the Police and Fire Pension Fund, which is always paid one month in arrears instead of three, and we're within, with between 60 and 90 days in paying that. But those are two big chunks of money that will equal about $600,000 negative to $800,000 negative when we get to the end of the year, because we're talking, you know, a year's worth or so, or 10 months of the C9 Trust and three months of the Police and Fire Pension. Those add up. So we're not going to be positive, but we are looking better, and our revenue is significantly better than it was this time last year, and we've paid off a huge amount of debt and caught up on everything else. In order to do that, we made significant cuts within the budget to a number of areas, and I think the city has somewhat suffered because of those cuts. And we're starting to see, you know, new hires of firemen, new hire, as we saw with the SAFER grant, new hires of police to get more police on the street. And I think one of the areas that we should consider addressing would be Public Works. We took two guys off of the general fund out of Parks and Recreation, or Parks and Playgrounds. We moved one to streets and we moved one to water. So those funds have carried the expense of those two individuals. We're now in a position, I think, where we can move two people from, one from each of those departments back into parks for the rest of this year, which would mean putting about $50,000, it'll maybe have to be a little bit more at the end of the year, into that key for Parks and Playgrounds personnel. We don't have to do it this meeting, but I wanted to maybe start a discussion on that. The other thing that is in here, you'll see $35,000 for personnel under Health Environmental. That's the health inspector that we had talked about bringing on. That may have to be increased as we get to the end of the year. That's just an early estimate.
Is that health inspector, are they putting him on here soon?
I'm not sure where that sits in the hiring process, if they've actually started somebody. I know that there were two individuals from in-house in the city that were looking at that position.
So those positions have to be replaced?
Typically, yes. You know, they might be people moving in or bringing somebody, a new hire in.
But you don't know?
One of those two, whoever they come from.
You don't know if that's happened yet, though?
I don't know if that's happened yet. I know that one of them is from the Building Department, one of them's from earning stacks. So one of those two departments may need a new hire later, but again, they're already appropriated money, you know, for those individuals for the rest of the year, so we won't have to increase those. We should only increase where the new person is.
Well, if you're looking for a sense, I certainly support the idea of getting Public Works a little relief here, because general oppression is that they've had to make do with a lot less for a lot longer, but I'm not going to say it's showing in the city. The city looks great, but it's, I'm sure it's a huge effort.
You're talking about moving people from, that we have currently, that we're paying out of the Water Department back into the Parks Department keys out of the general fund?
Correct. Basically, creating two spaces, two personnel spaces under Parks in the general fund, whether that be moving individuals from outside and then taking part timers and making them full timers to fill those spots, or moving to part timers and making them full timers there. You know, I'm not sure how that works with civil service. I know there's some part-time individuals that have been working for some time, and you know, this is a discussion to bring Mr. Gears into, obviously, to talk about whether or not that's something that's feasible. Looking at it financially, I think it makes sense to bring those individuals in. How that works personally, increasing staffing or moving from one to the other, that's going to be a decision for the Safety Service Director and the Public Works Director.
Right, well...
I just want to give, I think it'd be nice to give them the funds, the amount of money to be able to do that if that's their desire.
I think we can get together to get what the dollars would be required to do that and then discuss it with them and say, yeah, this is what it's going to take if we decide to do it, or if you think it's necessary, so.
We should be able to get that together for the next meeting.
While we're talking about Public Works, we had talked about getting those trucks for, you know, smaller trucks and that to replenish the ancient ones that are down there for the pickups and with the small salt trucks. We did get some quotes back and also, we got one, we're waiting on another one, leasing, you know, what the lease payment would be, you know, to cover those, so.
Are these salt trucks or general usage type trucks?
For both. They're not going to be the big ones, so it'll be the smaller, like a F-350 and F-450 style that would be equipped for, you know, be able to run plows and salt as well as everyday use throughout the city as well, so. So soon as we get those...
I've got that request letter.
So they get the leasing payment things together, send all the whole packet on it so we can hopefully move on that the next meeting as well. One other question, we were talking, whether it be under Public Works or, but in the chief's letter, when he also had mentioned about needing parts and that for repair of vehicles down there, I don't know, would that be coming out of Police Key or would that be coming out of the garage?
That typically comes out of the Police Key under, the garage keeps some parts, but usually vehicle parts are essentially billed to the department.
Right. That just in...
He's got three cars down there that need repair. Send the first part of that, about the uniforms and everything, so I didn't know if...
They've got an open PO for second quarter with $1,282 on it for vehicle parts. They've got another one open for $119 for vehicle parts. So if it exceeds that amount, there's, I've got POs for the Police Department for materials and supplies with front-end parts and labor, $1,500 in open PO, cooling fan, $462.
That's probably one here you...
Yeah, the, those are fingerprint Koi. There's a couple that are about $1,000. These are already approved purchase orders that don't have invoices yet. Automotive tech supplies, $2,400, and then it looks like other vehicle parts warranty work. So they've got about $7,000 or more in vehicle parts purchase orders that are open and still have use on them.
It sounds like they've got enough money to pay for these three cars, their fuel pump, radiator, and brakes.
Some of these are specifically like for front-end parts and labor, front-end alignment. So maybe there's rebuild transmissions on another one.
Yeah, there isn't a dollar amount on this. It's just taller about needing the parts, but you feel that there's a couple of open POs that they have.
There's open POs plus there were the POs that we just looked at. Well, those were all, none of those dealt with, those were just the new hires.
Right.
So they've got a number of open POs. I'm not sure how much more they would need to cover these beyond what they have. They probably need to look and see what they're using out of that and closing them out, and then the next meeting we can, if they submit a purchase order for the work and they know how much it is, then it ends up being on this list that I bring to you guys. So, and that actually then has dollar amounts on it.
And then one other thing while we're talking Police, and then whether he copied you on the letter, I must have left it in the car as well, but he had about $1,200 that they had. I must have left it in the car as well, but they had about $1,200 that they had in donations to... From the Police Night Out that we needed to add to their fund. But if you don't have a copy of that letter, I'll get it to you and then we can...
I show an $800 deposit in July. If there's additional deposits beyond that, as it stands now, I've got it marked for an increase of $1,050, but that would have been prior to the Police Night Out because I made these on the 15th.
Okay. I'll get you a copy.
So there must be another... There's probably, according to this, another 800. So we could just change that to $1,850.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Well, anybody have any questions or anything before we...
We had a letter from Joe Gears about a claim and somebody's law record saying down case law that we should be paying these fees.
I couldn't find that claim. Claim I did was the one for...
It's all right here. I got two of them here.
Yeah, I couldn't find that one. Like I said, I'm not sure whether we made that last meeting when we discussed it. We're hoping to get another opinion on that.
Right. That's the other thing we've got.
Is that Sylvia Johnson or Philip Capps?
Sylvia Johnson. The other one should be denied. Capps.
Yeah, because if you read that one there, I would recommend that that claim be denied. But on the other one...
The other one flies in the face of logic, I think.
Yeah, I can't quite understand that would be responsible for...
I think it's storage fees.
Yeah, I mean, what's your pleasure? I want to make a motion on the Philip Capps request for replacement of front door be denied.
We need some more discussion on that other one to more things.
I don't know what the feeling of the rest of the committee is on that Capps claim. Is that the one with the question? The one on... The one that I think is pretty cut and dry is the Capps claim.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. The other one, I think some of it's good enough questions and concerns to give it further
I recommend that the Capps claim be denied.
Sounds good.
And the other claim needs more discussion. Your pleasure.
Yeah, I can't find a dollar amount.
If you'll excuse me, I'm going to go and make copies.
Yeah, on the... Just on that lease $7,200 key.
Yes.
About that going to 54.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
54 and then $5,000 to the Prisoner Housing.
Correct.
And then a few other changes.
We can... Unless somebody else hits anything pretty good, your order will put that claim for discussion at the next meeting. We can have a little time review of this. Call the authorities and then we... There's no other question, we can close the meeting. I'll fill this report out with the signed...
That sounds good.
So moved.
Okay.
This meeting is officially closed. Thank you.